Okay.
Good morning. I would love to call the meeting to order further to county board of commissioners. It is Wednesday, December ninth, 2020. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do not believe we had any citizen input for the meeting this morning. I don't have anything, so we will dispense with that. We do have an excellent COVID update this morning from several different factors in our communities. So we will now consider our consent agenda.
I move approval of consent agenda.
I'll second that.
For the discussion?
Just acknowledging that we've got some appointments to the road districts and around the county, so different geographic areas, and we want to congratulate them and thank them for being, participating in their districts.
All right, Commissioner Devon?
I vote yes.
Mr. Henderson?
I vote yes.
And the chair votes yes, so thank you. Our first action item is our COVID update. I believe Dr. Conway, you have some slides to share with us?
Yes, actually, I have some slides and then Dr. Michael Johnson from St. Charles has some specifically about hospital occupancy that'll follow. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Being sensitive at time, I'll do my best to go through this all quite quickly. We continue to have a rapid increase in cases, although the last two weeks have been similar, going way over 400 cases. And you can see that we've had, as we mentioned before, and as Nahad Sotirazotti has often pointed out, our Public Health Director, that there was an inflection following the Fourth of July, one following Labor Day, and quite a steep one following Halloween, which of course is the first sort of popular recent years, also adult holiday, where there were quite a few parties. And then Thanksgiving further steepened things. So we're at a point now where we're approaching, and actually, as of today, we may have exceeded 3,000 cases in the county. I'm sorry. So this is the weekly cases, and you can see that the last couple--
You're saying our number today is like 81 at least? Because it was, I believe, 34 yesterday?
I actually don't know our number yet today, but I know that we've had a-- Zenith was the end of last week, one day where we had 129 cases. But we're at, you know, about 65 or so cases per day as of the last couple of weeks. So we're at quite high numbers, roughly double of what was the prior week. And then there's been a clear increase really since Halloween time. The age, this is the cumulative age distribution, sort of a stair-step pattern. But the predominant ages are young to middle-aged adults. And then there's also quite a few teenagers. This is the age distribution for the last-- This is the age distribution for the last, actually, just for last week. And you can see that there's, once again, a lot of young adults, some middle-aged folks, and still some teens, and we, we actually have had a number of cases in children, nine or below. This is our statistics, and we are, we do have a stair, stair-step-like pattern where we are increasing testing in the community, I think, in commonant with, with the clinical need. So we're, we're getting up well above 5,000 tests, and you can see that the rate of number positive is substantial. This is hospitalized patients, and I won't, I'll just say that's steep. I'm not going to say anything more, because as I mentioned, Dr. Michael Johnson will be talking about this in a few minutes.
Well, the good news is their website for this morning went down, it was 49 on Monday, and it went down to 39 today. So hopefully, we didn't have any deaths, and they just were able to recover enough to get out of the hospital.
Yes, thank you. So you can see our case rates are now very far into the, for school metrics, implementing comprehensive distance learning. And we had a, a long and sort of fraught session with Sharon Klein, who's the superintendent for Redmond Schools, and tried to do a rapid standing up of some sort of testing that would permit them to, to keep their limited in-person education open. But I think, I think he felt by the end of the day that that, that just wasn't possible to stand that up. So it's had that, that result locally. And then the rate, the, the way that these rates are calculated for test positivity changed a few weeks ago. So you have to see these with new eyes, starting with that data point of 4.5%. Because what they're doing is they're including all the negatives now. So it's had a dilutional effect, so that the nominal infection rates have been, have been substantially reduced by this new calculation method. Nonetheless, we're over 8% by that new method, and that, that by itself would have pushed us to consider transition to comprehensive distance learning. And the, the prior one, the case rates are actually, it's, it's the worst of the two that has the effect. And then of course, there's a risk-based framework for counties that's been implemented recently along with the constraints that the place by the state and by the governor's office not so long ago. The extreme risk, risk threshold is about 200 per the, the school numbers as well. And we're, we have a lot of company, basically, except for the tiny part of Farnie County that touches us and the far east of the county. We're really surrounded by counties that have very high rates. And then that's relatively continuous from Malheur up, up north as well. So a very high percentage of the state is a very high-risk level now.
Don't forget, Willawa is up there, and it's green.
Yep, Willawa's green, despite being next to Idaho, which is interesting.
Well, there's no, there's no direct route from Willawa to Idaho, so you, there's, there's no-
Right.
It's all, it's the Hell's Canyon and the Snake River. I think that really the, the greens are the most remote counties in the state, basically, in some ways.
That makes sense. I have been in Willawa County for, actually, meeting in Joseph, but I, I wasn't aware that you couldn't get to Idaho from there, so that actually does help explain that. Thank you, Commissioner. So, moving on, basically, these are just reminders that we do know that COVID-19 can persist in still air indoors for quite a while. So if there's no air motion, that's a recipe for transmission of the disease, if anybody in the room has it. Distance helps, masking is critical. And then this is the risk continuum, the Texas Medical Association put this out, I think it was in May, but it still is an excellent representation, and it, as evidence accumulates, the ranking is, is actually fairly accurate. That you have very, at the very low end of the continuum is, I think, male and getting takeout. And then the very high end, as we go up, eating indoors, and then very high, the highest risk, starts with eating buffet, working out at a gym. And then the, the very highest risk one is going to a bar. And the other, the other three in the very highest risk category of nine are basically mass gatherings, which are, of course, currently not happening. So this is just, this is the, if, if you're avidly seeking acquisition of COVID, going somewhere that's, nobody's masked and indoors is a recipe for that. If you're hoping to reduce your risk substantially, wearing masks, maintaining space between persons that you don't live with, and being outdoors is the best. So with that, I will stop sharing and turn it over to Dr. Johnson, unless there's a pressing question.
Oh, Dr. Conway, there is, on the Oregon Health Authority website, the mortalities for the last four years, with how many people have died, I believe it's like 36,000 a year or something, and then with an approximation for the deaths for this year per their numbers as of December 1st. Could you look at that at some point and get back to us? Because actually, they are projecting less deaths in our state than the last four years on that graph. It's on the OHA website.
And this is, this is the excess deaths page?
I'm not sure what page it is. All I know is the graphs are showing that there's been 36,000 for, what is it, 16, 17, 18, 19? And then this year, it's actually showing a bit under it.
Okay, I'll be happy to look at that and, and get back to you.
Great, thank you so much. Dr. Johnson, thank you so much for joining us today.
Well, thanks for having me. I'm very happy to be here. I won't take up too much of the time on your agenda. I have just four slides that are going to really focus on the, the current situation of the COVID-19 right here in our central Oregon region. So I am including generally across all of these slides, data from all three counties, Jefferson, Crook, and Deschutes. And the data that you see is current as of this morning. First, just a real quick recap of our hospital capacity. It was mentioned before, you know, that yes, we did have 39 COVID-19 patient, inpatients at, as of the midnight census last evening. But it's important to understand that we had, well, we had seven patients discharged yesterday. So the throughput within the hospital, you know, is still in the 40s, and that's the way it's typically been. So the numbers that you see on the website are a midnight census, but the comings and goings, we've had in between seven and 12 discharges a day for the past week or so. So there's a lot of turnover.
Dr. Johnson, I was just curious. I had just read that the Cleveland Clinic was using melatonin to treat COVID patients, and that they were finding that patients treated with melatonin, no one had died from it, and that actually, they were in the hospital seven days versus their average 13. Have you seen anything of that use in Oregon yet? This was from Cleveland Clinic.
I, I made a note of that. I have not read anything on that, and this is a little bit outside my wheelhouse. I'll, I'll bring that up with Dr. Absalon.
Okay, if you would.
But it sounds like, based on the numbers that you're talking about, they're, they're probably only using that for the worst-case patients because of the length of stay that you're talking about. Our average length of stay for a patient who doesn't go into the ICU is about, I want to say, 4.3 days? Something like that. And the length of stay for somebody who spends time in the ICU is about 14.2 or 3 days. So there's a huge difference in those two populations, and they really skew those, those numbers. So if they're talking about reducing their length of stay from the two-week time period to less than that, they're probably talking about those patients that are the, the most sick and in the ICU. But that's just speculation. I'll, I'll, I'll follow up with that and send the information to, to Dr. Conway.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Yeah, but thanks for asking. So, jumping back to the census numbers, we did have seven patients in the ICU at the midnight census, five patients on the ventilator. So currently, or at least as of midnight last night, 20 out of 24 of our ICU beds were occupied in the ICU by any type of patient, and five out of six beds were occupied in the ICU in Redmond. And the overall occupancy rate of our, all four hospitals, all departments is, is 86% right now.
Oh, Dr. Johnson, when you built the tower, has that additional unit in the tower been put into the hospital system yet? I know that the ICU went there, but I thought there was actually expansion space in the tower.
Yes, the, the numbers escaped me off the top of my head for the, the total number of beds that we've increased. I know that we increased the ICU by six beds. So, yes, that's had a, they are definitely being fully, that, that benefit is being fully realized.
Well, it was, you know, it's a wonderful addition to the hospital, so.
Yeah, it, it really has been.
It's so timely, too.
As well as our operational folks.
Dr. Johnson, this is Commissioner Henderson. I have a couple of questions also with, are you doing any data? You know, this increase over the last several weeks is significant. Are you doing any data about, with regard to age on that? And then can you talk about people coming in from outside Deschutes County? What the pattern is there, the, generally, how, what percent of that is from outside Deschutes County?
We look very closely at the age distribution, and you saw Dr. Conway's slide earlier about the distribution of those who are positive. The, the number, or the average age of the inpatient in our St. Charles hospital system for COVID patients has been really stable since September, late August and Sept, through September, October, and November, right around 55 years old or so is the average age of an inpatient. Of those patients who have passed away because of, or that were COVID-positive, that average age is, what was it, 72? And so there's, even though these, there is a predominance of younger people getting diagnosed positive, they are not the ones typically that are going into the hospital system at, at such a rate as like those in their 50s and 60s and 70s, so.
When you, and then when you say average, does that mean there's, is this like an average where a 35 is, and a 75 equal a 55? Is that?
Yeah, and-
Or is it the number of people below and above 55, or?
Variability. The mean is slightly higher than the median, meaning this, the distribution is skewed to the right. So those older people are pulling that mean to the right. So the median is, is three or four years younger than the mean for, for both of those that I mentioned. But, and there is a tremendous amount of variability. I think of those who have passed away, we've had somebody in their 40s and somebody that was 95. So there is a tremendous amount of variability.
Is there a lower limit on the, say, below a certain age that you've had no hospitalizations or very few? Is there kind of a, you must have to be able to do a curve almost of the, of the hospitalizations and?
Yes, it's actually quite interesting to take a look at the proportion of the population that each of the demographic age bands occupy, and then what percentage of those age bands are coming up positive? Which, what proportion are, are the, make up the inpatients and those who are dying? And each time you take one of those steps, it moves further to the right. Meaning, you know, if you're older, you're a small proportion of the population, but you are a huge proportion of the mortalities. So the older you get, certainly the higher risk you are of-
So the chart that Dr. Conway has shown, we see weekly. So we're pretty, the number of positives and that sort of thing. But we've never really seen a breakdown for hospitalizations, and now that we're getting into this, you know, and there was the, the peak in July was kind of like the peak in March, but we're clearly in a different area now. It'd be interesting to see, one of the reasons I think younger people are more willing to do risky behavior is I think they know very few people of their age group that have actually gotten sick or felt it or whatever. They may have pos, just a positive, but it'd be interesting to know if there's only five under 20 and 10 under 30, or whatever, however many it is, and get, if there is those cases, it'd be good to get out. But I think the perception in the public is that there aren't, and so it'd be interesting.
Yeah, and there's, there's a, I don't want to get too far off topic, but there's a, an article that was published back in the late September that talked about, most of our predictive models are focusing on this reproductive number, which is related to the intervention factor. So like the reproductive number, if the reproductive number is 1.5, it means everybody who is infected will infect 1.5 people during their time that they can transmit the virus. So in that case, it's going to obviously grow. That, we've been focusing a lot, and most of the models do strongly incorporate a lot of the characteristics of, of that R-not value and the intervention factor. But what we're not able to monitor very closely, but we're seeing huge impact of what you call these super-spreaders. So you have this one individual that either is asymptomatic, presymptomatic, or just doesn't care, and is spreading it to a whole bunch of people knowingly or unknowingly. And that is very difficult to, to model. And they're finding that those super-spreaders are really, really impact these numbers much more. I mean, if 95% of us do really well, but 5% are not, that 5% can have a huge negative impact on the number of cases and hospitalizations. So it makes it so difficult.
Yeah, makes sense.
Dr. Johnson, I'm-
One last comment before I jump into the slides. That, that we have recently reduced the number of elective surgeries, and each case is being reviewed by a, a group or a panel to see whether or not that needs to happen, or if it can be safely rescheduled, with, with a real focus on those surgeries where the patient will require to occupy a bed post-surgery. So we're just trying to minimize that to, to make sure that we have capacity in staffing.
So we may not have slides advancing if, if-
Right. Where did the slides go?
Let me reshare and see what happens.
Yes, good idea.
Okay, are you seeing it now?
Not yet.
We're seeing you at this point.
Good morning. Where is your Santa hat?
Here it comes. There you go.
Good, okay.
All right, I thought I had this down. So you're looking at a, a similar slide to what Dr. Conway showed. I think that it's, my only comments here are that, you know, you have several things that are impacting both the number of positive cases and the number of inpatients. And the blue line here is representing inpatients in the St. Charles system. And so you have this fear-fatigue cycle, that, by the way, our threshold for fear is getting higher and higher. It takes, it takes more and more cases for people to actually react to and change their behavior than we did last summer. We also have a change in the season, which has moved many people indoors, which is not a good thing with regard to the transmission rate. But we also have policies that go into place and holidays that occur. And it's been very, very predictable that when one of these things happen, about two weeks later, we will see the impact of that on the inpatient population. I think more so even than the number of positive cases that you saw in an earlier, earlier slide. So if you take each one of these lines, the- So, if you take each one of these lines, the green lines, vertical lines, or holidays, you typically see a spike two weeks later, and the policy changes could go either way, like the stay-at-home order, about two weeks later, we start, saw things to go down. But you have all these competing cycles, so the fear fatigue cycle, a policy that helps, and a holiday that hurts, as well as the season. So, this is kind of what's going on, and this does give us great insight when it comes to trying to predict what's going to happen in the next couple of weeks.
I guess I have one question about this, is that, then, how do you really explain the last four weeks? Because we had, you know, we had all the new tough rules on the 18th of November, which is almost four weeks ago now. There was two weeks where there was about the same, then it jumps up, but it jumps up before it's two weeks past Thanksgiving. I mean, we're better, you know, we're now two weeks past Thanksgiving, but we've been really high the whole time since Thanksgiving. So, I guess I, I've always wondered about the holiday explanation. It makes, you would think that would be true, but it, the chart doesn't just show that.
That's, that's a great, that's a great question. Take a look in a little bit more detail toward the end there. We had Halloween hit, which gave us a bump. We had Thanksgiving, which we are about ready to see a bump. We had the governor's tightened policy, which should be moving it in the other direction about two weeks later, which would be right about, you know, maybe last week sometime. But we also had a big change in the weather, which has changed a lot of our behavior. And like I said before, we're a little bit numb to the fear fatigue cycle. So, when things started to grow, people are kind of getting tired of this and not reacting the way that we did last summer. So, all these things are fighting against each other, and obviously, the one that is winning is the impact of the holidays and the change of the seasons. Who knows how high that would have been had we not had the tightened policy from the governor? That's kind of the case that it was earlier this, this summer, when we had the masking mandate that went in on July 1st, and then we had followed it up immediately with Independence Day on the 4th. Who knows how big this spike would have been had we not had the masking mandate? So, we have all these competing things, but that's a great question.
Yeah, thank you.
And it's quite a puzzle to try and solve.
Thank you for explaining those.
This is a, a chart that we look at very, very closely. This is both the predicted and the actual number of cases. Now, these are not midnight census numbers, these are patient throughput on a calendar date. So, like today, we had 46 patients, or excuse me, yesterday, we had 46 patients that came through the hospital system. Only 39 were here at midnight, but most of my focus is on resource allocation and staffing and PPE levels, and so I'm looking at throughput more so than that midnight census number. But you can see that, and the blue shaded region here is a high and low estimate for the number of patients. I really only feel good about any of the predictive models that look out maybe two to three weeks. Anything beyond that is really quite a guess. And I should say that even this downturn that I'm hoping occurs just before Christmas is an anticipated downturn, based on all those things that I was talking about before, prior to us seeing the bump from Christmas. What really hurt us here is we, we never really, I was hoping to see a downturn prior to us realizing the Thanksgiving spike, but I think that that's going to hit. It should be like within the next three or four days, we're going to see what happened over Thanksgiving when it comes to the hospitalizations. So, this is kind of what we're expecting in the past, and as time goes on, I share this information with the rest of the hospital system, and this is how we base our staffing plan and decisions like, should, do we need to curtail our elective surgeries and things like that?
Interesting. What do you feel is the percentage of now, of patients that are in the hospital that are from Deschutes County?
Oh, yeah, I was just looking at that. So, out of the 39 patients that were, let's see if I can recall all this, there was 39 patients in the midnight census. Only three of those were out of state. And, and 30 of the, 36 that were not out of state were in our tri-county area, and the others were from neighboring counties. So, contiguous neighbor counties. So, there wasn't, we're not getting, we're not seeing huge numbers from out of state, we're not seeing huge numbers from the valley, and that's been the case for a while now. Every now and then, we'll have some peppered in here, but a lot of that is not because somebody comes here on vacation and, and gets the, contracts it, but sometimes it's even things like, it's an elderly person who lives outside the area, and they are coming here for family support, so they're in our county to go to the hospital because that's where the rest of their family is. So, I mean, there's a lot of different stories, but it's not a huge problem that we are realizing inpatient population from outside central Oregon.
Dr. Johnson, I believe it was about two weeks ago, I had heard a story on the radio that patients were actually brought into St. Charles, not COVID, but other patients from, I'm not sure where they were brought in from, but that isn't happening anymore, is that? I think it was eight patients were brought in to your healthcare system?
Yeah, and this too is a little bit outside my area of expertise, but I do know, based on comments that Dr. Absalon has said in the past, that we do have patients that are flown here, you know, brought here, because in that area, their hospital system doesn't have the kind of care that they need. So, if it's escalated care, special care, or a capacity issue at another hospital for, I don't know, pick your department, that, yes, we do still accept transfers, and sometimes those are just absolutely necessary. And we, I don't know whether or not those numbers have increased or decreased, but I do know that typically there is an influx of some patients that need our level of care that's provided at St. Charles. And that's not a change because of the situation, that always occurs.
Thank you for that.
So, this is a new slide that I've put together, basically to drive home two points. First of all, to show you kind of how long and how far we've been on the decline. So, let me explain what these numbers mean. This intervention factor is how successful are we at reducing the transmission rate of the COVID virus? So, if, if we were 100% effective, that means that there would never be any transmission. If we were 0% effective, that means that we would just let the virus do whatever it wants to. This magic number of .62, so if we're 62% effective, then that's where this switches from being pandemic to endemic, meaning it's, it's not going to grow anymore, it's going to die out. So, this is where we want to hit, is this dotted line. We've never really hit it, but we've come close on these summer months, early summer, or late spring, early summer months, but we have continued to drop over, you know, the past, since the mid-September timeframe. And so, we've been going down for a long time, and we've gone down a long ways. So, what that means is we have a long ways to recover to try and fix this rise. This intervention factor needs to get up here in these high 50s to low 60s before we're going to see any kind of numbers like this. And so, I don't know, this isn't a doomsday slide, but it is to try and emphasize the magnitude and the duration of our, kind of our decline in our, in the transmission rate. I won't say entirely by behavior, because some of that is just driven by the fact that we're indoors more now than we were, you know, back in early September, but it's the transmission rate that has, has kind of flame, been the fuel for this flame.
Dr. Johnson, are you saying, just so I make sure I understand this, is this the intervention rate just at the hospital, or is this with, for the whole county, all positive cases you're talking about?
The intervention factor is what dictates the path of this blue line on the predicted values, and the dotted line is the actual. So, as time goes on, we adjust the parameters historically to know what was the intervention factor at that time that would give us about those, those number of cases. And so, some people talk about the R factor, and some talk about the intervention factor. Those are actually inverse of each other. So, you know, the reproductive number, as that goes down, your intervention goes up. So, I mean, I could have created the same chart with the reproductive number, and it would have looked just like this.
And I guess I'm just not clear, is this the entire population of Deschutes County, or is this just within the hospital, the intervention factor?
No, this is for not just the entire county, but for the three-county region. It's a combination of Jefferson, Crook, and Deschutes County, 80% of which is because of the population of Deschutes. But, no, this is the overall central Oregon intervention factor that goes into the predictive model that you saw earlier, as it relates to the number of new positive cases each day.
I guess, I guess, appreciate, from a hospital standpoint, where you have a presence in all three, you know, and facilities in all three counties, but I know that Jefferson County is quite a higher rate per, let's say, 100,000 than Deschutes County, or, and Crook may be the lowest, I don't know right now, but, so, and we only are Deschutes County commissioners, so when we try to explain what's going on in our county, is I'm trying to get it broken out a little bit, just because it's, we didn't, it's not obvious to us.
I know that Jefferson has a prison, and the prison has their numbers that are included in the Jefferson County numbers, so that's pretty awkward for their community, because then their numbers aren't real clear.
I, I don't think I'm going too far out on a limb. If I were to say that this particular, that Deschutes County drives the model regardless of those numbers that you're talking about, when, when we have, you know, 80% of the population of the three counties is in Deschutes. When you, when you start dividing up that other 20% between those other two almost evenly, it doesn't really impact this overall shape too much. I can still say unequivocally that Deschutes County, like the central Oregon region, has been on the decline since mid-September with regard to the intervention factor, and so, without Deschutes County coming back a long ways in the near future, our central Oregon region is not going to either.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you.
So, Dr. Johnson, I have a question that's out of, probably out of your realm, but the Red Cross blood testing was done from December, blood samples, of which I believe 2% of them showed that they were actually the COVID antigenist, whatever. So, I'm wondering, did, have, has St. Charles gone back and looked at some of our patients from last December to see, did we have any patients that early here?
I might have missed part of that. Were you talking about the flu cases, or are you talking?
They, no, they were COVID, they tested positive for COVID. 2% of the 1,900, I believe it was, blood drawn from December, there was a couple of days in December that they actually looked at their sample, and 2% of those showed that those people already had had COVID. And I'm just wondering, did we go back and look? Because I have friends that said they were sure they had COVID earlier in the year, like, you know, on the first of January, February. Have we gone back and looked at any of our hospitalizations then to see, was it actually really here in Deschutes County that early, and just on a smaller scale?
I, I will say this, that I, I read some stats just recently from within the hospital. Now, we, we certainly test everybody who comes in who's symptomatic that meets the criteria, so that they get a test for COVID, but anybody who comes into the hospital as an inpatient, you know, that is, is going to go through a procedure where they're going to be unmasked, and for whatever reason throughout the procedure, and, and are a potential to spread the virus, even if they're asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic. So, we have conducted thousands of tests on those patients, and we have had a positive rate that's like .2%. So, I don't, no, kind of to back up a little bit, no, I have not looked into, or am I aware that we've looked into the numbers from the Red Cross blood draws, but we do have kind of an internal way of monitoring how prevalent is this in the, in the rest of the community. Now, the other thing that goes along with that is, and I'm not sure what kind of a test the Red Cross is doing, if they're testing and saying, have you ever had it, do you have, you know, do you have antibodies, or do you, are you asymptomatic and you currently have it? I don't, I don't know, but since nobody really knows the time period for immunity on this, that's another kind of wrench in the works, that even though you had it before, I mean, there have been cases of people getting it more than once, but, I don't know. I guess what I'm saying is it's a complicated story, but what I do want to do is, is look into that, and I will follow up. Sorry for the long, drawn-out non-answer.
No, no, I just was curious, because, you know, I do know people that feel like they actually had it earlier than March, when, you know, we had all of our major changes. So, I was just wondering if, you know, locally, if we'd done anything like that.
And I think we all hear that.
I've read some.
Right.
I've heard, I've heard the same story, so, something we hear.
Back in 2019, earlier than almost anybody originally thought.
Right. Yes.
And I only have one more slide, and this is really the slide that you had seen briefly before, but, so, Dr. Conway showed a by-week chart of how many cases there were. Again, this is all three counties, but the shape is exactly the same for Deschutes. And, and what I do is just do a seven-day cumulative total for each day, so I look at today plus the six previous days, and just for the magnitude of where we are right now, it's like two and a half times what it was when we thought we were seeing that peak of the, or the second surge peak back in mid to late July. So, it's, I don't know, is it just another thing that points out kind of the magnitude of where we are? And that's the end of my slides. I'm certainly happy to entertain any questions, and I have written down several notes that I owe you some, some feedback, the Melatona question from Cleveland, do some age band breakdowns of the hospital numbers, and then to look into the Red Cross tests from their 1,900 or so blood draws.
That'd be great, thank you so much.
Dr. Johnson, Phil Henderson again. So, one thing that's just been interesting to me, and I don't know if you can shed light on it or not, but I read the reports of all the deaths around the state, and I, it seems to me that our healthcare community here has done kind of a remarkable job of avoiding deaths. We're way lower, I think we're 15th or 20th in the number per, you know, population. Is there, is that, I mean, I'd like to say it's just due to great health of the efforts at the hospital and the medical community, or is it also just a different population, or is it, any feel for that? It's just been, it's been really good to see, but I just was curious if you have any theories? It's just been, it's been really good to see, but I just was curious if you have any theories on that.
That's, that's a great question. I'm, I'm glad you asked that. I, when you take a look at, there's a webpage that you can go to that rank orders the health of the various counties throughout Oregon. And we're not the healthiest, but we're within the top five and that I think is having a huge impact on it. So if you're healthier going into it, you're probably going to deal better with the virus. Again, I'm, this is, I'm not a medical doctor, but it, that's not a very wild assumption to make. So we've got that going for us. I have an incredibly biased opinion on, on the care that we provide throughout our healthcare system, so I'd like to think that we were very, very proactive and got a really good jump on this at St. Charles. We did have the benefit of the rest of the country and even the rest of the state was ahead of us with regard to being impacted by the virus. So we did learn some early lessons which, which had great payback, which is very much the case with things like this. The earlier you can act, the, you know, the orders of magnitude improvement on the payback. So I think it's a combination of several things.
Great. Yeah, thanks for clarifying that and opposing that.
Yeah, eight of our 15 fatalities in Deschutes County were on hospice, Dr. Johnson, which is, you know, I, I do believe St. Charles is a five-star hospital. And I was just wondering, do you, are you using like Regeneron as the therapeutic here? I was just curious, what, what is the drug of choice to treat it, COVID at this moment in time? Do you have anything you can share?
I, I do not know the answer to that at all. Dr. Conway might. I know Dr. Absalon could answer that and I will look, dig into that as well.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thanks for all your information today. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Now I know it's at something at midnight and not at 7:00 AM when I look at it. So I'll know it's a midnight number.
It's throughout that calendar day, so people are coming and going. But those are the, I mean, that greatly impacts the staff and the operations. When you have to turn over seven more beds, I mean, it's not like we have those beds available all day long. They're, maybe they weren't even available until 11 o'clock at night yesterday. Kind of depends on when those patients were discharged, but.
I do have one more question, I guess. How are the healthcare workers at the hospital doing? And we read about it, you know, and hear a lot about it nationally, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I'm as close to that as, as perhaps some. I know that there is great concern for our, the care and safety of, of our caregivers and, and we do have ever-changing protocols that, that occur throughout the operations of the hospital with regard to COVID. And all of those are aimed at balancing the safety of our caregivers and the care of our patients and the availability of, of the resources that are available. So we'll redone it there, but I mean, the, the resources that are available. So I, yes, there is, there is great concern, but we're just giving it as much attention as we possibly can to ensure that they're safe. And we have a, a new webpage internally that's for caregiver health, that is a great place for our caregivers to go, to ask questions, to, to read through the frequently asked questions, to find out what are the updated and most recent protocols and a couple of hotline numbers there for them to call. So I, I don't know, I'm, I'm really proud of the, the effort that's gone in to try and inform our caregivers and to keep everybody safe.
Good.
Yes, they've, they've been doing an amazing, outstanding job and we so appreciate them, you know, putting themselves and their family on the line. So it's definitely to be respected in our community and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I believe we have our cares. Active funding update. There he is. Should we let Greg in?
I'm, I'm here. I'm, I'm stumbling a little bit. Give me a second here. Okay, there we go. Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning Greg.
Greg Munn, Treasurer and Chief Financial Officer. I'm here for the weekly update on the Coronavirus Relief Fund allocation. And I have a brief report. I've given you a paper copy of this last night. It was in your boxes. Hopefully you have that in front of you there. I will share this on my screen here as well.
Oh wait, you know what? We have one more person. Justin is here to help us today. Sorry Greg.
Oh, you want me to step back?
Could you, would you mind?
Yeah, no worries.
Just from the other side of the community, from Summit BMC, Justin Siffle, I'm so sorry because we'd asked you, there was a little bit of confusion yesterday. So thank you for stepping up and I will see you tomorrow with our Health Council meeting.
No problem. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I can, I just, I'm hoping this is what you wanted. I got the message a little late, so I, I just put together the last four weeks worth of testing numbers. Does that work for you or do you?
Yes, because we are seeing they're up to the thousands now. So just wondered what you're, what you're seeing from your point of view.
Sure, let me, I'll just give you the rundown of the last four weeks. Close to 7,000 tests through our group, so we run the antigen and the RNA rapid, so the Sofia and the Abbott testing. We also do some PCR send out to Quest, but the overwhelming majority of our tests are rapid now. They've just really picked up for us this last month. We've went from, you know, doing six, 700 a week to where we're up to almost 2,000 a week every week now. So here is kind of the breakdown of the last couple of weeks and if you want more data, I can go further back if you'd like. But last week we did 1,800 tests. We had 82 positives, so 4.5% positive rate. The week before was our highest week. We did 1,700 tests with 154 positives, so a 9% positive rate. The week before that, we did about 1,800 tests again, 115 positives, so six, about 6.6% positivity rate. In total, well over 5,000 rapid tests during the month of November. About 80% or 85% of our total testing was rapid. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Sorry if that wasn't what you're looking for. It was just with the short time, that was all I could put together.
No, no, this is great, Justin, to hear that. So actually this last week, the positivity went down then to 4.5% at least?
It did in our, in our testing, yes.
Okay, but it was six and a half, 6.6, nine, which went up, but then it went down. So that sounds a little bit better. How does this week look so far? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, same thing, probably on pace for about 2,000 tests this week, but I don't have positives from Monday and Tuesday yet. So I'd be, keep you informed as we go along.
Justin, Commissioner Henderson here. What, what is, who's, who's getting tested? Are these referrals from your doctors or are there people that want to know themselves or are they tracing? Do you have any breakdown of who's, as you've stepped up testing, who is getting more testing or what groups?
I think universally, the answer would be everyone. They're part of that, there, there is a part of people who are worried well, who maybe don't understand the full definition of a high-risk exposure. So, you know, someone knows someone who maybe came back with a positive test and they're worried, so they come in for a test. There's definitely a sub-population of that. We try to provide a lot of testing to keep the surgery centers going, so there's a significant portion of that that are asymptomatic, that are just getting a test to go get a procedure. And we've noticed a massive increase in the number of people with symptoms who've come into over the past month or two months. So I don't think it would be fair to say that there's any one group in particular.
Yeah, that's good. That makes, all those make sense. We knew about the pre-surgery or pre-procedural, that's, we've heard that before. The, the low contact is interesting because I hear that from people, well, I knew somebody and so, you know, you might have a family member that went in for a test, so just to be sure you're going for a test or what, you know, even though you're not sure if they have it or so. And then symptoms, people are, ever since this existed, I've heard lots of people say, well, I think I have it, you know, and just because they're sick, they, it's the first thing people go to now rather than one of many. So that's interesting. And you're, you've also been able to expand your capacity. Is that, is that allowed you to do more or have you had this ability and it's just the demands increased?
Well, I think because of our partnership, we've always had the ability to, we've never run out of rapid testing and we've never had a limitation on people's ability to get a rapid test. So if, if you are a Summit Medical Group patient or you go through our urgent care and you just do a simple virtual visit, we have the opportunity to give the whole community the test, you know, if, if need, I shouldn't say that, like, we couldn't take 10,000 people at once, but I mean, we've been able to keep up with the volume as it's grown from, like I said, we were doing four, five, 600 tests a week to now where we're doing 2,000. Some of the innovations we've been able to put in place, like we do, we do tent testing and drive-through now. So it used to be we would test asymptomatic people in a specific place in our building and then we would test symptomatic people outside at the curb. We've changed that and one of the ways that made it so that we could do so much more is we have a drive-through tent where four, four cars at a time can drive through.
I saw it yesterday. Remind, yeah, I just happened to drive by and saw it. It reminds me kind of of a return place at the airport where you drive up and you take care of your car and you're out of there. So it's four at a time then? That's interesting.
Yeah, we do four at a time and we, we picked it up after, we did flu, flu shots through our parking lot. We were able to do about 3,000 people over four weekends on four-hour days. So we really got good with the Epic and the optimization of our staff. And so on any given day, we can test a couple hundred people through the tent. And that has been the innovation that made it so that we could, you know, really improve our throughput. I do think on provider time, we've been struggling, we've, you know, repurposed providers to do the virtual visits and to increase our, our urgent cares. And we've went through shifting two, three, four, five providers on any given day to, because the volume has been so much of patients requesting this service. So I think we, we do worry about being overstretched in that area.
So Justin, what about the flu test though? The, normally the winter flu, are we seeing that? I should have asked the hospital that question. Are we seeing that? Are you guys, as you're practicing the flu?
We do flu tests. We've had some positives. It's not nearly what it was last year, but for, I think this is obviously a unique year, so I wouldn't want to bank it on other years. But sometimes in other years too, a lot of the flu testing really kind of picks up in the December, January, February time period. So we may be a little early on it this year and with all the social distancing, it may have had an impact on not seeing it. I think one of the things we're happy about is working with our, our parent company. Hopefully some of these cartridges that we're getting in now are going to have the ability to COVID and flu test at the same time. So I think that'll be a, a really major opportunity for improvement in, in this future state that if, if you're ordering a flu, you can, you can get the COVID result at the same time or vice versa.
So you can't do that at this moment, but you should be shortly?
We're working on trying to, those supplies come in, the Sofia machine has the ability to do that with a specific cartridge and we're just trying to have that supply available. But as of right now, we, as of right now, they're two separate tests and you, you can get both tests, but they're just, it'd be great to be able to test them both at the same time for the, for the same test.
I think that's, that would be excellent, excellent news. So, well, we've definitely seen testing. I mean, originally we were worried that we were going to have, we needed like 1,100 or 900 tests a week and now we're dealing with thousands. So somehow it just really, the community has really stepped up and you, clearly BMC, Summit has done its part.
We appreciate it. We, if there's anything else we can do, you just let us know and we'll, we'll do our best, you know, always to try to meet the needs. So thank you guys so much for all the leadership you guys have put through this and to the hospital too. I know it's a trying time and they're doing just an excellent job. So if there's anything we can do, let us know.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I forgot. What a day.
That's good. We got a lot of information.
Oh my gosh, amazing numbers, isn't it? Unbelievable. Well, I went there when it was, you just drove up, pulled in and they came and tested you, so. Okay, Greg, sorry about that. That was our medical community giving us some of the behind-the-scenes numbers on what they're doing and how we are managing to have such huge numbers.
Okay, give me a minute here. I'm trying to share my screen. All right, are you seeing the updated report on the screen?
Yes, we are.
Okay, terrific. So let me just give you a brief update. This is the same report we've been looking at week over week. Updates from last week are in bold red and I'll touch on those real quick here. But one other part I've added is that down underneath the project allocations, so all the allocations you've made, those that are highlighted or shaded in gray have been either fully expended or fully obligated at this point. So the numbers over here on the right-hand side don't show that because some of these, some of the invoices for their expenses have not been submitted and paid by the county yet, but they've been fully expensed on their side. Then if we scroll down here to the bottom, you can see last week, the approved 12,2 of 20, this was the addition of the $75,000 going, going to the business, going to supplement the business relief contract with COIC. That has been written into the contract that was, I believe, has been executed at this point or is close to it. And then the Circuit Court ran at the fairgrounds, the $25,000 to offset that rental cost to the Circuit Court, or a portion of that rental cost to the Circuit Court. So it leaves us with a little over $1,000 here at the bottom. Below that are the pending requests. There's been two additions since last week. One was the Assessor Field Appraisal Equipment of $90,000 and one is just yesterday, Rental Assistance Program from Neighbor Impact of $50,000, $57,000. There was more demand than originally anticipated for that grant award that was up above, that was previously awarded by the board. So I, I told Neighbor Impact we would add this to, to the list as well.
Greg, last night I, I sent you an email. I had a question on the Mosaic medical testing, A5. I was wondering, they said they were going to conduct 1,074 tests prior to the 30th deadline. Do you know what, how many tests they've done to date then?
I don't know that, but I do know that Dr. Conway has reached out and has, oh, he's holding his finger up here if he would like to speak.
Yes, as, as I think Greg pointed out within the reconciliation a week or two ago, Mosaic has had others encounter very substantial delays in getting the Abbott ID Now kits, which were the ones, the molecular amplification testing kits that we had specified in contract. So that's why we reduced the total amount. I did get a report about two hours ago that in the latter, it's primarily the latter, a little less than two weeks in November, Mosaic completed 215 of those tests and they've been working apace since then. And so I'll have a, an estimate a little bit later today, hopefully for December 0 through. through 6. But I, I think the best approximation is probably on the order of 300 have been completed to date. So I think you're on a trajectory to utilize the full funding by the end of December.
Okay, thank you.
The full revised amount of 110K.
Okay, the 1,074. All right, thank you.
Yes, thanks very much. And we appreciate, we appreciate and I'm sure they appreciate your support of this.
Of course, and don't forget, Dr. Young is available for the community also. She is working in our parking lot, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. I know she's been extremely busy helping underinsured and uninsured people. And we, as county commissioners, are so, we are so relieved that she is out there for the public. Please, if you know someone that needs a test, to contact Dr. Jeanne Young. And she, you can just pull into our parking lot and have that taken care of. So, but I do believe you probably want, would want an appointment time so she doesn't back up. But she, she has been out there helping us, since what, October?
At least early November, yeah.
No, it's, it definitely, maybe even started in September. So she's, we're just getting out that she is available and there is definitely a need.
Okay, commissioners, I just have two more bullet points on the subject. One is, we are now at December 9th. We need to have these funds fully spent by, within about 20 days or so, by the 30th, 21 days, I guess. And I was hoping to have a conversation about pre-authorizing allocation approvals as we move forward. We're, we're starting to get down, we're really sharpening our pencil on dollars that can be reallocated. Unfortunately, we typically, the way these meetings work is we're one, we're one week in between each opportunity to have you allocate funds. And as we get closer to the end of the year, we're going to be running in into the holidays. I'm a little concerned we're going to be running out of time to be able to do that. So with that, I would like to ask for, if you feel like pre-authorizing some of these requests, that we can pick through and fund as the funding becomes available.
And looking at the calendar, I'm seeing it the same way. Next week is probably the time to say, you know, if there's a question about being a fully expend an item, now's the time to, you know, just back off and reallocate. And you're saying you'll do that before next week, possibly with some of these funds with partners. And I'm thinking at the board level, we might, you know, make kind of a harder date next week saying changes are possibly happening, you know, change would happen in the allocations. But I'm with you, let's do some pre-allocations so as it comes available.
Greg, what's, what's the amount of money you think won't get spent? I mean, we've allocated right now down to 15, less than $1,500, so.
Right. So what is it we're going to get to pull back in and reallocate?
Yeah, well, that's, I don't know the answer to that question, but as we get closer to the end of the year, I know that there will be, or I'm, I'm, I don't know, I am, I won't be surprised if there's funds that come back and that will be available to be reallocated. That could be $1,000 or it could be 20,000.
But you don't think it's 100?
I, I would just say, you know, looking up above on the list here, what's been fully obligated, I think that would be the outside number, definitely. It doesn't seem realistic that it would be that much, but it certainly could be.
Okay.
So are only options these five requests or, I mean?
These are the, these requests that are in front of you on that last page are the only requests that I've received so far.
Did we ever get any more clarity on the Jericho Road shower needs? Is that, because I, I heard they were using a motel and it's like, well, who's paying for the motel, I guess?
Right.
Now, the last conversation I had with Scott Cooper at Neighbor Impact is, they were looking, Neighbor Impact was looking at a potential funding option through the state, but I have not heard anything since last week on that.
But do they fund Jericho Road then or?
I don't.
They're different entities.
Jericho Road is going to have a grant applied for by Neighbor Impact and, but that grant application was going to take way longer than what Don had hoped would take, Don Sannical. But it still did look like it would be a good possibility for them to get significant funding. I know they'd reached out to a lot of different organizations for help with that ask. And he had said, he didn't ask for help with the motel funding, but he had said that was something that they were going to implement.
I guess my, of these five, I, I would, I guess my first might be, I mean, we don't really have any clarity of that at all, so I don't know why, what we would do if we, we may not use that by the end of December either. So I would, my first, I think, would probably be the Circuit Court rental fees because that's a real cost. I don't know about buying new equipment related to this. I, I'm not that enthused with that. And I guess the rental assistance would be my two, first two.
Some thoughts that I would have is rental assistance could be the catch-all at this point. Also, we do have allocations for Deschutes County facilities and maybe there's some reallocations to other Deschutes County needs, referring to the Assessor's Office and Community Development. So that's a way to, you know, maybe take those line items that were already, I guess, yeah, whichever line item it was, the facilities line item was 100,000 and I don't think it was fully expended.
So you're saying, take the, if there's money left over in that category, put it to the two equipment requests?
Yeah, yeah, just as an idea.
Look at that too.
Yep.
Actually, I'm, I really think we need to focus on the rental assistance program because people that have lost their jobs from the restaurants are living month to month. And if they aren't, they aren't paying their rent, then that means that the property owner is going to have our time paying their mortgage, their property taxes, et cetera, so.
And I would agree with that.
I just feel like we have to, we have to help the community.
And this is the time for that because it is winter. If, as those rental situations might exacerbate, there's heating costs also. So it's real important to stabilize that.
Utilities, rent, yeah, I know. We don't want anyone not being able to turn their heat on for their family.
Commissioners, just if I might, just to note, not to advocate, but so you have a full slate of options there, you could also augment the business assistance grants to a larger degree.
Yeah, I was thinking that also. I mean, I, they're in the same boat, it's just with regard to their livelihoods as opposed to their mortgage or rent, but so.
Well, and that's obvious, it'd be wonderful to do that. I'm just thinking, I don't know that we have the scope and scale for that. You know, if we're talking tens of thousands of dollars, it may be easier to put that amount into the rental assistance and not, because we're not going to be writing a, I mean, they're both needy, obviously.
So it really depends on how much we have.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if we ended up with 100, we'd split it maybe.
Yeah, if it's only 2,000 or 20.
We're looking at $1,462 at this moment and that's really not going to do much, it's going to keep somebody's power on, but yes.
Well, maybe we say $50,000 for rental assistance and then if it's more than that, we start to talk about the business assistance.
The first, how much?
50,000. You know, if, between now and next Wednesday is what I think we're empowering Greg with pre-allocation between now and next Wednesday.
Right. So what do you think the average rent is here that we're talking about? Anybody have an idea?
Sure, there's different numbers.
I know, I know. I mean, $1,200? I mean, I was just trying to think, how many families could we help if we had 50,000?
I'm sure it's 500 to 1,500, you know, for, for monthly expenses for different-sized families, you know?
Definitely. Okay. All right, Greg.
Does that help?
Oh, so what, what was the decision of 2,000 for rental assistance?
50 if we are so lucky to have money that was going to be returned to us to reallocate?
Okay. Up 50,000 for rental assistance.
And then next week, we'll discuss further.
Right.
Seems like some of these entities would be trying to clarify with you where they're going to end up or how much they could give. I mean, some of these are entities we have an impact or they're kind of our entities or related to us, so we could ask, you know, there's, just maybe we do a check by next, halfway through the month and get people to commit.
So D1 County Facilities, that's an unallocated amount of 32,000? Is that the last number available? So I'd still advocate for if there's other things to do with it in the county, because there's two other departments asking for some resources.
Oh, we actually still have 88,000 left in Family Medical Leave Act. What is it? We did use 61,900 at the last draw, so maybe that is going to all go. But that's, that's kind of a big number. Some of the other two months were only 32,000 and 29,000, 33,000, 29,000. So we, we might have some funding there.
On the emergency operations.
Yeah, the same thing. I mean, I think it's, I think somebody needs to go to these particular entities and say, where are we? And this is, and then take it. Don't just leave it for them to not spend it. Just say, well, given your best effort, we don't want any money sitting around, so it sounds like you're going to be able to, or you're going to need 40,000 of this, we're going to take the rest.
Well, and that's, that could be made, the decision like that guidance at this board level right now because, yeah, next week is kind of the beginning of the end, you know, because of.
Not to give somebody authority to go do that and try to get back money. I mean, Tom, you can oversee this, there's a lot of entities here and people just, you know.
Yeah, commissioners, I've already made that note. So I think the, and Greg's been working on that, I think the way we frame it is that only if you're certain you will expend X amount, will you be allocated. The rest, we're going to take back unless something changes rapidly. But I think that's the way we would frame the act.
Yeah, that's good. I think that's another good step between now and next week.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, commissioners, I would just throw in also that this has been something we've been doing almost weekly since the very beginning, is checking back with those program managers for each one of those allocations and confirming, you know, what's their status, how much do they think they're going to spend by the end of the year, any outcomes that we can bring back and report back to you on, on how the impact of the actual funding and the work. And then if there's dollars that can be freed up, you know, let's re, let's put this back on the sheet and reallocate it. So what you're asking is normal and it will.
Yeah, but I, now it's different, I think it's, this is fish or cut bait time. This is, it's not, give us your best estimate and what do you think? And it's like, because it's, it's on them if they don't spend it and we've got people that do need it. So I think it's, and I, I actually think you're empowered to take it back if you want, if you think there, if you think it's questionable or you're looking at the numbers and saying, hey, we, they haven't, you know, like, like Family Medical Leave, it's just an estimate, but Family Medical Leave gets paid some way anyway, so use the best effort and say, well, we're going to reduce it to 25,000 or whatever it is for three weeks.
And we're still in an emergency declaration. There may be other future reimbursements, there may be another federal COVID relief package. And we have resources that we basically reimbursed ourselves to get to this point. So, yeah, it may be more efficient to really pull back just black and white next week and then, you know, re, kind of reset in the next couple of months and figure out what we need to do.
Greg, the Family Medical Leave Act has taken an average of 41,000 and we're looking at 88,000 as their balance. So, yeah, that could be something that we could use.
I'll come back, I'll come back next week with a sharpened pencil version of this that each one of these line items will have a specific amount that, that is, will be used by the end of the year.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, then just the last, just brief comment. I don't know if, if Dave Givens is going to give you an update on the balance of the Business Relief Grant, but I just want to let you know that that grant agreement, we have signed it with the state, we have sent it back to the state, this is for the 2.3 million, and they have told me that within a couple of days, they will have it signed and funded into our pool account. So we could have those funds by Friday. And at the same time, we, David has asked COIC to prepare the invoice. So what I'm getting at here is we should be able to turn those funds around rather quickly Friday at the very earliest and probably maybe more like Monday or Tuesday.
You know, we're not meeting until Tuesday and Wednesday and I believe, I just heard we had 1,100 and approximately 50 applications. It doesn't close till tonight at midnight. So, yes, the committee is actually going to meet Tuesday morning and then hopefully Wednesday afternoon on making decisions.
Great.
But I think we talked about.
That's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Nope, I don't know. Any more questions?
Just, yeah, for those applications for the COIC, I'd just like to have access to them at some point, you know, even if committee work's going to be done kind of officially somewhere else. Once it gets compiled.
Yes, once it gets compiled. It's going to be a busy day tomorrow. Well, hopefully, they're already compiling them, so categorizing them. Is it a shutdown restaurant? Is this a shutdown gym?
So, Tom, I see you right, are you going to help with that? Just make sure, so maybe just make sure all three of us get the, whatever we can and then if there's any feedback opportunity.
All right.
Thank you.
Greg, I didn't understand this correctly. The, are you still on?
I am.
Okay, so if the balance of what we allocated was 150,000 for the Family Medical Leave Act and we did, we fully expended it? It says we have fully expended it. And this number on the right side is not, the 88,000 doesn't mean anything?
We have not fully expended it.
Because in the first category, you know, the second line says at the top, updates fully expended are in gray. Okay, so we haven't fully extended it. Well, if you add up the 32,000, the 28,000 and the 61,900, it comes to 123,000, which we've expended, right? Isn't that how you look at that? So where do we get that 88,100?
I'm going to have to go back in and look at that in the spreadsheet.
Because I'm like thinking, I just said something that's not correct once I looked at the numbers.
Oh, I see why, okay. So the 61,900?
Yes.
That is the sum of expenditures to date. That's not the month, that's the sum.
Okay, that's the sum.
That would be, that would be the total of the $32,000 number and the $28,000 number, that's 61,900. So the difference between the 150 and the 61,900 is the 88,100. But, but concerning, what's that?
Because you've got a nine and a two, 61,900 is not, does not add up unless you're doing a different math.
Well, it could be.
It must be around, it should be one and 901, should be 61,901.
Well, the folks, yeah, the folks in here that put it in are super precise, so there's probably decimal points behind that that we're not seeing.
Okay, all right. I mean, I'm just adding it up?
Yep, yep. So on that subject though, we, you know, it's, it's now November or it's actually December, so we, we should have a very good number on our FMLA leave through November. That'll give us a better idea next week when we come back and talk about this, how much is remaining for December.
Okay, so we don't have the November number yet?
No, not yet. But we will have better numbers, refined numbers next week.
All right. Great. So it could be that we will actually have funds there.
That's true.
If it's averaging about 30,000 four months, we could have an extra maybe 30,000 left over.
Yeah, that's true. That is correct.
Great. Wonderful. I was getting kind of worried. Thank you, Greg.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next week. So Dave.
Morning Commissioners, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. You have two items before you today. These are adoptions. Well, first and second reading and adoption of, of the two ordinances from last week's code public hearings. The first one is Ordinance 2020-005. That's an ordinance amending and enacting identified sections of the Deschutes County Code. This would be the time for first and second reading by title only, and then a separate motion adopting 2020-005 by emergency. You'll indicate, or should recall, I indicated last week that we were hoping to have these effective January 1st. Just for convenience sake, as that being a cut over date to the new code platform.
Great. Thank you so much, Dave. All right. So we did, I believe we had this on our agenda last week where we.
Public hearing.
Our public hearing. We, and so today we need to amend, enact. So by emergency, of course. So that would mean all three Commissioners would need to vote yes.
That is correct. It needs a unanimous vote of the Commissioners present.
Okay.
I think what we need is a motion for first and second reading of Ordinance Number 2020-005.
Okay.
Amending and enacting identified sections of the Deschutes County Code. So I'll make that motion.
That would be by title only, I assume.
Oh, by title only.
Okay, by title only.
And second.
And a second. Okay. Any further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Vote yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, by title only. With a unanimous decision, an ordinance amending and enacting identified sections of Deschutes County Code, Ordinance Number 2020-005, to be effective January 1st, 2021.
No, you.
Well, I'll move, yeah, I'll move adoption.
Wait, doesn't she have to do her second reading also?
No, don't we have to move adoption?
No, it would be a second reading now, so you could.
Okay.
Read it one more time and then, then we could have the motion.
By this, now this will be my second reading. An ordinance amending and enacting identified sections of Deschutes County Code, Ordinance Number 2020-005. And title only.
But this time I'll move adoption of Ordinance 2020-005 by emergency with the authorized date of January 1st, 2021.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Uh, just acknowledging emergency clause, you know, there's history with it. And I, when I got first started, people were asking us never to use it. So this is very much a, you know, housekeeping measure, aligning dates, getting to a point in time where anybody looking at the county code knows the date that it's cut over. And it's very much a January 1st business year alignment.
I just want to congratulate Dave for his perseverance. And, and as we talked about last time, and I think we first started seeing these about two or year, two or three years ago. So glad we got it done finally.
And our Commissioners, I, I might note also on the emergency clause issue, just to give people more comfort, that doesn't preclude anybody's ability to challenge this action through the legal process, which in this case would be a writ of review filed in circuit court. And there's a 60-day window on that. So it, it doesn't impede that in any way. It just gives us the, the clean date to switch over. I'm not anticipating any type of challenge, but it, it doesn't preclude anybody's right if they chose to.
Thank you.
Well, so do we need to vote down on that one? Okay, Commissioner DeBonne?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So we have now an emergency.
So the next matter before you folks is again, first and second reading with emergency adoption of Ordinance 2020-015. That's an ordinance repealing Title III Personnel out of the Deschutes County Code and directing it to be created as a standalone HR personnel document. And again, just like before, this would be first and second reading by title only, and then adoption by emergency. Again, this would be effective January 1, 2021. And as I indicated with the previous one, would also be subject to anybody challenging it through the legal process, which is a writ of review in circuit court with a 60-day window in which to do that from today.
Okay. Is there any discussion regarding, this is Title III. It is personnel of Deschutes County Code, and it's going to be in a separate document.
So I'm going to support this. I do, I do wonder if the reason it was put in the code by somebody at some point was so that it was more easy to see by the public, who basically are our employer, who are our employers, as to how we treat personnel and being in the code. But that said, I have been convinced by counsel that it's, it's awkward to be put as a code item when we want to change things because it's, I don't know, more cumbersome, I guess. It's one of my conclusions or.
Bone, with the speed of information, referring to the fact that you can have a policy on a website and the whole world can see it at any moment, I think that, you know, that just the technology environment has changed since it was put in the county code too.
I don't know if our policies are available on the website or not.
Well, internal policy also.
I mean, for the public to know how, I mean, we're all.
These HR rules will be public facing.
There you go.
What's that?
These HR rules will be public facing. They'll be on the county's website that the public can access. And in addition to the county's Intranet site for, for internal to the county. But they, they will be very, very much visible. It's, it's just getting them out of the, the code, which is enacted by ordinance and carries the force of law.
Okay, so they're still visible.
With that, I'll move first and second reading by title only of Ordinance Number 2020-015.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Vote yes.
And the Chair votes yes, by title only and ordinance first reading, and ordinance repealing Title O3 Personnel of the Deschutes County Code and creating HR personnel rule, personnel rules, Ordinance Number 2020-015. And a second reading, as this is by emergency, and ordinance repealing Title 03-Personnel of the Deschutes County Code and creating HR personnel rules, Ordinance Number 2020-015. So it will be effective as of January 1st, 2021.
Go ahead.
You do both? Okay.
I read, I did read it twice.
Okay, good.
No, it's just.
Huh?
I was offering you to make the motion.
Yeah, I'll move adoption of Ordinance Number 2020-015, repealing Title III Personnel of the Deschutes County Code and creating HR personal rules, personnel rules, excuse me.
I'll just note that that's an emergency adoption effective 1-1 of 21.
Thank you.
Emergency adoption effective 1-1 of 21.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Vote yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So we have adopted the ordinance repealing Title 03 Personnel of the Deschutes County Code and creating HR personnel rules and its ordinance Number 2020-015, effective 1-1 of 2021.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you, Dave, and congratulations. All right. So now it looks like we have Kyle Collins regarding a property line adjustment and a tentative plan approval for 19800 Pacific Heights Road.
Good morning Commissioners, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
All right. For the record, Kyle Collins, Associate Planner, Community Development Department. If you'll give me one second, I'm going to share my screen. All right, as the Chair stated, this is the date set for deliberations on a 10-lot subdivision, tentatively known as Juniper Rim Subdivision, and a series of property line adjustments. This follows a public hearing that took place on this matter exactly one month ago on November the 9th. I'll try to briefly go through some of the items that came up during that public hearing. A lot of this will be reiterations of those points. Feel free to stop me at any time if you have questions, though. The location, as the Chair noted, is 19800 Pacific Heights Road. It's located on kind of the extreme northwest corner of the city of Bend. It's adjacent to a neighboring subdivision known as Pacific Cascade Heights. It's due north of the Riley Ranch Nature Preserve and due south of a portion of Tumalo State Park. The application in this instance is a series of two property line adjustments that would increase the, the overall size of the original property by a tenth of an acre, up to 100.1 acres. And then subsequently dividing that property into just over 10-acre lots, a series of 10, just over 10-acre lots. Access to that property would continue to be from Pacific Heights Road, which is due east of the property, and New Loop Road, tentatively known as Juniper Rim Loop. Here is some images that show where the, the tentative property line adjustments would take place. Both occur adjacent to properties to the south of the subject lot. And here's an overall image of what the tentative plan at this time is, is proposed to look like. You can see in the far bottom right corner, an extension of Pacific Heights Road, which is the existing right-of-way to the east, and then extending off of that Juniper Rim Loop, which provides the majority of access to the proposed parcels. Some of the procedural history here, the original applications were referred to a public hearing before a hearings officer on June 30th of this year. And that was ultimately approved by the hearings officer and a final decision mailed out on August 14th. The applicant in this case is the appellant, and they appealed the hearings officer decision on August 26th of 2020 and requested that the Board evaluate certain conditions of approval that were included in that decision. And as I stated previously, the Board conducted their public hearing on November the 9th of 2020. The key issues that were brought up on appeal involve the development standards within what's described as the Deschutes River Corridor, which I'll go into more in a second. And parties not the applicant raised issues related to the maintenance requirements for Pacific Heights Road and adjacent right-of-ways. Regarding the Deschutes River Corridor, Title 19, which governs the subject property, has a specific clause for any new subdivisions. And it requires that new development within what's described as the Deschutes River Corridor are subject to a design review process. This is very similar to the landscape management review process. If the Commissioners are familiar with that, which occurs in our Title 18 areas. So it's similar, but not quite the same. The Deschutes River Corridor in this instance refers to all property that's located within 100 feet of the ordinary high watermark of the Deschutes River. And the ordinary high watermark is also defined in Title 19 as well. The hearings officer's response to this particular criterion within the initial public hearing, they interpreted this to say, the setback for all new development should be a minimum of 100 feet from the ordinary high watermark, unless the applicant can demonstrate a lesser setback as warranted. So effectively requesting a variance to those, those setback standards that are put in place by this portion of Title 19. However, the hearings officer found that, given those standards, it was unclear what the drafters of that particular provision of the code intended by including a provision for design review in areas that would already be prohibited from development without a specific variance request. And as such, the hearings officer concluded that those standards should be intended for any and all properties which are at least partially within the Deschutes River Corridor, rather than the specific siding of the development itself. In keeping with that interpretation in mind, the hearings officer included one condition that would have required design review for any future development on six of the proposed lots of the subdivision. And staff points out that those lots are all parcels on site, which the hearings officer found would have at least some portion of their boundaries within 100 feet of the ordinary high watermark of the Deschutes River. Just to give you kind of an idea of where those fall, you can see lots three through eight here, all of which have at least some portion of their parcels, principally on the rim of the canyon leading down to the Deschutes River, which is off to the west in this case.
So Kyle?
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask you at this moment in time? Dave Agostino Parker LLC has a letter in our file that was dated November 15th of 2020. And in that letter, Keith Agostino states that there are only three lots which are within the Deschutes River Corridor.
He, he does indeed, and I'll, I'll actually bring that up.
Okay, well, I, you know, I was reading that and I'm going, one of them is like .05 acre, you know. Okay, so I just, you know, I'm just going ahead. Thank you.
Oh, no, no worries. So in relation to that hearings officer interpretation and decision, the applicant disputes that particular language that's made by the hearings officer and states that implicitly they have included new language which is not included in the original code. And they reiterate that the code language as written describes that all new development for properties that are within the Deschutes River Corridor are subject to a design review process. And again, points out that the Deschutes River Corridor means all property within 100 feet of the ordinary high watermark of the Deschutes River. Given those specific definitions, the applicant claims that the hearings officer effectively incorrectly amended the language of that portion of Title 19 to implicitly state that all new development on lots that are partially within the Deschutes River Corridor are subject to a design review process. And the applicant argues that that particular interpretation of the code language ignores the plain reading of the code and is specifically requested that the Board either strike that particular condition from the original hearings officer decision, or amend it in some of the following ways. The applicant points out that the topography of the Deschutes River Canyon on the subject property effectively prevents any development on site within 100 feet of the ordinary high watermark. And they point out that development within 100 feet of the ordinary high watermark is not necessarily always prohibited. And there are provisions of Title 19 which do allow exceptions to those standards if certain criteria can be met. And again, that's, that's effectively a variance to those specific setback standards.
And apparently that happens more in the city of Bend than it does in the county? Is that what I read into this?
So I, I am not familiar with the city of Bend's provisions as it relates to variant standards or development along the Deschutes River Corridor. Within Deschutes County, most properties are governed by our Title 18 standards. And typically, if you were constructing along the Deschutes River in that instance, you would be subject to, again, landscape management review, which is similar to this design review, but not entirely the same. And it also requires a 100-foot setback distance from the ordinary high watermark. But again, there are exceptions that are allotted if, if certain design characteristics can be met or if the topography of a lot in particular prohibits development outside of those areas. So if you have a property that's too small to build 100 feet away, for example, from the river, then there are exceptions which could still allow you to develop the lot.
Thank you, Kyle.
Of course. After some additional research, staff has been unable to locate any type of legislative history that provides additional insight into what the original drafters of this portion of the code intended. And at this point, staff believes that either reading of the code provided by the hearings officer or the applicant is at least plausible. Staff points out that if the Board concurs with the hearings officer's findings and maintains that site plan review condition, the Board should provide some additional clarity on a few different items. One of which is that the site plan review identified in Title 18 is to be prepared by the Bend Urban Area Planning Committee. is to be prepared by the Bend Urban Area Planning Commission or the Planning Director. However, as staff pointed out at the hearing, the Bend Urban Area Planning Commission is no longer a functional or active review body. And thus, if the Board wanted to maintain this particular condition for site plan review on, or excuse me, design site review for the properties in question, they would need to identify a specific hearings body to move forward with that design review. And while this has never come up to my knowledge before the Board before, in previous instances, design review has been prepared by the Deschutes County Planning Commission as a secondary review body or replacement review body. Staff also points out that, oh, go ahead.
Well, just have a, I'm kind of going through the memo as at the same time we're talking about this. This issue about that's raised in the D Agostino letter, was that fully vetted at the hearing or is that?
That's after our hearing, the letter's dated on the 15th of November.
But that, yeah, so that argument, I don't, I mean, I missed it, but I don't recall it being made at the hearing that there's only, it's like they're saying, well, if you're going to say that the the review, site review is required, it's only going to be on these three lots. It's like a fallback position. So was that fully reviewed in our arguments or is that new to us?
It's, oh, go ahead.
Oh, Kyle, you would know better than I, but I just thought they originally said that in their document from their attorney, but then that letter was actually included to say where they got that information.
I have a note during, from the hearing, just from my handwritten note, said, it says Laura, condition EE, can it be deleted, was the question mark? And then it says, 3, 7, and 8, do not have 100 foot from river tentative plant map. I mean, so it was mentioned, it was mentioned.
It was mentioned.
But it's more fact or more evidence to say it or restate it, okay?
That was the evidence in.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that's correct, Commissioner. So it actually was brought up at the public hearing just by testimony from Keith Dagostino, the applicant's surveyor in this particular instance and designer. However, this new letter brought forward in the open record period is the first written statement of that.
Okay.
To my knowledge.
It conforms to what he said in the hearing.
Correct.
Thank you.
And leading into that, staff points out that should the Board maintain that site plan review condition outlined by the hearings officer, the applicant has requested that that condition, which is stated as EE, be amended to only apply to lots four, five, and six. Again, pointed out by Mr. Dagostino that those are the only lots based on the topography and the actual orientation of the parcels that have property within 100 feet of the ordinary high watermark. And again, here's an overview of where those parcels would fall, four, five, and six.
Yeah, four is half an acre, five is 1.1 acres, and six is .05, so.
They're in the, uh,
Right.
Deschutes River Corridor.
Correct.
They have at least, yeah, they have at least some portion of their properties within the Deschutes River Corridor. Staff points out that if the Board concurs with the applicant's findings and removes that site plan condition, they should be aware that there are some additional results outside of this particular instance. That interpretation of that code provision would likely apply to all properties in these Title 18 areas, otherwise known as the Bend Urban Reserve Areas, and wouldn't be unique to the subject property. And it would only be applicable, site plan review would only be applicable moving forward for applicants who have specifically requested an exception to the 100-foot setback standards of Title 19.
Thanks, Gary. Bye-bye.
The next major issue that was brought up at the hearing and in documentation through the open record period relates to road maintenance standards for existing rights of way and proposed rights of way through the subdivision. And this is related to Title 17, our partition and subdivision code sections. And it concerns road maintenance for any right of way that provides access to a land proposed for subdivision. And that's specific language which is important states that no proposed subdivision shall be approved unless it would be accessed by roads constructed to county standards and by roads under one of the following conditions, which includes public roads with maintenance responsibility assigned to landowners or homeowners association by covenant or agreement. In this particular instance, the interested party, which represents a neighboring property owner to the south of the subject lot, states that a neighboring subdivision, Pacific Cascade Heights, which is just to the east of the subject property, has included a termination clause in their recorded road maintenance covenant, which was acknowledged and approved by the Deschutes County Road Department at the time that it was recorded. And as such, this neighboring property owner, the Ed Elkins or the Elkins Family Trust, specifically requests the Board to rule on the following issues. One, does the Board agree that residents of the Pacific Cascade Heights subdivision are not obligated to maintain Pacific Cascade Heights subdivision road? Two, are future owners of Smallwood lots obligated to maintain roads in their own subdivision and to sign a maintenance agreement or covenant to assure road maintenance? And finally, should residents of the Smallwood subdivision be required to maintain Pacific Heights, Pacific Cascade Heights subdivision road if that HOA opts out of the road maintenance duties as a result of the Pacific Heights, as a result of the use of Pacific Heights Road by the Smallwood subdivision?
So I have a question about this whole issue. Again, maybe I'm not remembering exactly the, I know, I remember the issue, but how does all that get into this application for, I mean, those go into the rights of other parties that weren't really part of this application. So are all those proper for us to decide in this situation? I mean, it seems like it's really outside our.
I would ultimately defer to the Board, but I, staff's position on this is no. This is not the proper avenue for this to be adjudicated, which I'll go into in a second.
I can understand why they would want clarification now. And I did read that, yes, the staff is saying, no, we shouldn't be considering this issue now. But, you know, if you're a neighbor, it really, is that termination clause allowed in other things, Kyle? Is that the clause that ended up in that document in 2017?
So the termination clause specifically outlines a set of conditions wherein the Pacific Cascade Heights subdivision, the HOA, has agreed if the roads through that subdivision are utilized by any parties not associated with their HOA, they have a voluntary option of removing all of their maintenance duties associated with that. Now, that's complicated by the fact that it may run counter to their land use decision, which ultimately approved the subdivision itself and which is a much more complicated issue to go into as a part of this particular hearings process, particularly given that it hasn't occurred before. But the actual clauses associated with the maintenance covenant, I think those are drawn up by the parties themselves and provided that the road department accepts those as reasonable, then they are recorded. I don't know that it's a common thing to do, but in this particular instance, it was included, the road department acknowledged that provision and allowed it to be recorded.
Yeah. So the, yeah, so I, I don't know. Are we going to, so we're going to discuss, one, whether this is an appropriate decision to decide this specific issue and then, and then as part of our deliberations, correct?
That's correct.
Because I see, it's just a term, it's just a con, it's just a clause that was added to a covenant, road maintenance covenant and, yeah. But it's becoming, it's like we're giving, the county gave it its blessing. And maybe there's a question whether they should have or not or, but, okay.
Moving forward, the interested party that brought forward these issues, this is the two primary lots that they own adjacent to the subject property, which is due north of these, both owned by the Elkins Family Trust. And obviously, this relates to potential subdivisions that might occur on these lots in the future and road maintenance obligations. As I stated earlier, staff points out that the hearings officer made the following findings. And they specifically stated that it's undisputed that Pacific Heights Road is a public road which provides access to the subject property in this case. And it's also further undisputed that it's currently maintained by the Pacific Cascade Heights Homeowners Association. And thus, the proposed subdivision is accessed by a public road with maintenance responsibility. And again, the code language that we are required to address as county staff is specifically this Title 17 language, which is the only language related to road maintenance duties associated with subdivisions or proposed subdivisions. Staff relies on that hearings officer finding moving forward unless it's altered or interpreted differently by the Board. And again, staff does not believe that this venue is the appropriate area for discerning the various road maintenance responsibilities for each party in question, specifically in light of the fact that the applicant has agreed to sign and record a road maintenance covenant as required by code as a part of the present subdivision request for any of the new rights of way that are established through this tentative plan. So the applicant has agreed to record in the same way that Pacific Cascade Heights previously recorded a road maintenance covenant for their new proposed roads through the subdivision.
But what, I guess the narrow issue that Terri Fancher would be asking and the Elkins is, they're saying, well, it's a public road, it's maintained by the public, or by the Pacific Cascade Heights homeowners now, but because it has a termination right in the covenant, it may not be a public road forever, which would really then say you couldn't even subdivide because there isn't a permanent public road. I guess that would be the argument against this.
And that's correct. So it would still be a public road, it just wouldn't have maintenance responsibilities accepted at that point. And as I stated earlier, it's, there are some unclear outcomes. What would occur should they elect to, for example, enact the termination clause and remove those maintenance responsibilities, specifically because their land use decision, which approved that subdivision, required this as a part of approval. And so it's very possible that that would constitute a violation of their original land use decision, which might need to be remedied by code enforcement or some other method. Staff doesn't know if that's exactly what would occur in that particular case. And again, at this point in time, there is a road, a public road, maintained by one of those those maintenance authorities, in this case, the Pacific Cascade Heights HOA. And presumably, the Smallwoods, in this case, the applicants, would record a very similar road maintenance covenant or agreement to maintain the roads through their portions of the subdivision.
So by calling Pacific Heights a local right of way, does that give it some continuity? I mean, that it's always going to be there and it will be maintained?
I don't believe that has an effect on the maintenance obligation. So the Deschutes County Road Department does not have an obligation to maintain road maintenance responsibilities unless they're accepted. Is my understanding, that would probably be a question best directed to the road department itself. But the portions of Pacific Cascade Heights, for example, that would be extended as well as Juniper Rim Loop, the applicants in this case are required to record some type of road maintenance covenant that shows how their HOA would maintain those portions of the road. And that's, that would be included as a condition of approval should this application be approved. Moving forward, staff points out that the Elkins do have some options for resolving their specific concerns. The first of which is to apply for a declaratory ruling application, which would provide some clarity on the status of the maintenance obligations as they relate to Pacific Heights Road. Or secondarily, they could apply for a tentative plan in much the same way as the current applicants to subdivide their neighboring parcels, and at which point the matter of road maintenance obligations would be adjudicated as part of that review, particularly if one of the term, if the termination clause was enacted in some way. As I stated previously, we do acknowledge that the termination of the maintenance covenant by the Pacific Cascade Heights HOA may constitute a violation of that original tentative plan approval, which established Pacific Cascade Heights, and that was approved back in 2011. However, staff again points out that that particular scenario is not under consideration in this subject review as that maintenance covenant is still active. And resolution of those items would need to be pursued through some type of separate land use action if the homeowners association of Pacific Cascade Heights did in fact terminate the maintenance covenant.
So Kyle, I've got a question. Why couldn't it be a condition of this subdivision's approval that in the event, I mean, they're doing this knowing there's a termination clause and they're in the current entity maintaining the road, which is the Pacific Heights group, the homeowners association, Pacific Cascade Heights homeowners association, knowing that there's a termination clause in that, that in the, couldn't there be a condition that in the event that that is exercised by that entity, that it would be up to this group to maintain the road from Obie Riley Inn? So that the Elkins, I mean, they know, they're doing this subject to knowledge of that agreement. And we're debating, discussing it here, so, and it is, it does seem like it would, it's, it may be found invalid, which would be okay with Smallwood Group because they're, that means they wouldn't have to do anything that Pacific Cascade Heights would. But if it is acted on and it can't be stopped or whatever, that, I mean, that was a benefit that the Pacific Cascade Heights buyer must have negotiated. So make it to the, due to this, up to this applicant to maintain the road in the event Pacific Cascade Heights doesn't. And that way, the Elkins property is not basically landlocked, having to maintain the entire road to get to their, the back corner of the deal.
I would answer that in a couple of different ways. One, I think some of those questions are probably best directed towards county legal counsel. I think it has some uncertain effects, particularly given that, one, to reiterate one of the earlier points I made, the only portion of the Deschutes County Code that we have to lean against in relation to these road maintenance covenant is this section outlined above, DCC 1716105, which the only thing it requires regarding road maintenance for any new proposed subdivision is, one, is there a public road that accesses the property? And two, is it currently maintained by one of those independent agencies? So an HOA is what's happening here. And both of those factors, as the hearings officer pointed out, are in fact met. So they have a road, a public road, it's being maintained by somebody. And thus, any conditions associated with the road maintenance covenant, I think would be up to the language that is applicable or agreeable to the Deschutes County Road Department ultimately.
But I understand what Commissioner Henderson is saying. You know, okay, so we've got the first people with their home, HOA, and now we're going to have the second people, and they're all going out the same road. And you're saying that they only have to keep their road maintained for their, you know, at the point where they get to the Pacific Heights, or Pacific Cascade. So then, you know, we've got the people trying to look out for their interests that are, you know, at the top, or maybe you could say at the bottom of the food chain, whatever. But there's definitely, I can understand why they would bring it up here. And yet, you know, staff and our documents have said that we don't really need to worry about this. And yet, I can understand why the Elkins Trust is worried.
Madam Chair, this is Peter Gatawski.
Yes, good morning, Peter.
Deschutes County Planning Manager. And the Board is recognizing a situation that is noteworthy. However, I guess just to underscore Kyle's summation, the circumstances regarding the maintenance of the road as it takes one through different developments is a standard that's been met by this application. And because there's a maintenance agreement for the public road, the challenge that staff's facing and one that we're trying to kind of reset is that the circumstances that have been raised. been raised by Liz Fancher and Ed Elkins really falls outside the scope of the criteria relating to whether the board wants to consider approving this tentative plat. And ultimately, I think certainly from my perspective, is the maintenance obligations is really a matter that should be resolved privately. I mean, you are, I mean, the chair is right, there's a circumstance where it's like the last one waiting in line as this road is extended and development has occurred, is mindful of the obligations potentially of having to maintain the whole road. And while that's worst-case scenario, it, I think it's one that really needs to be resolved outside the scope of these proceedings. And I guess to make one final remark, as Kyle noted, is there is a process or a series of processes that are available to Liz Fancher's client that would involve everybody that's taking access to that road and figuring out or determining what are the requisite responsibilities. But the board is being drawn into this circumstance, and the challenge that is before us collectively is that these aren't necessarily the criteria that determine whether or not this tentative plat should be approved. And Kyle has noted those requisite elements.
Thank you, Peter.
You know, I'm just, but I'm going to just say, you know, Peter, I understand what you're saying, and probably this is something, the circumstance wasn't really contemplated when this code provision was, 1716105 was passed. But we're saying, we're kind of reading it like with maintenance responsibility assigned, even if only temporarily, to landowners or homeowners association by covenant or agreement. In other words, what if the agreement had said it terminates automatically in five years, and we're within the five years period, then it is, does meet the standards today, but it's going to, we know it's going to be, end in five years. What this agreement's doing is saying it may end in five years, and so it's not, the question is, with maintenance agreement assigned permanently to, is, you know, that's what I guess is we're kind of reading into it, it doesn't have to be permanently, it just has to be at the time of application, which to me is kind of a problem, because they've obviously contemplated it could end. And it's interesting, just like the other, it's interesting because we're down to what do a couple of words mean, or what do you assume the words mean? But I don't know, I, it seems like it'd be hard to solve this after the fact as well. I mean, I don't know, it seems like we could put the condition in if it's, it could be, I guess, appealed, but.
So again, Commissioner, and maybe this, you point out interesting items, and the reality is Liz Fancher and her client are, they're specifically using this process, this current tentative plan process, to raise much broader questions around road maintenance responsibilities and the specific mechanics of how those are put in place for subdivisions, which is a good discussion to have. It's just not, it's not clear to staff that this is the appropriate channel to try to resolve those issues. Unfortunately, our hands in some way are tied by the language of the code as it's written. And again, as a follow-up to that, if the Pacific Cascade Heights, just to use your hypothetical example, if they did terminate that particular road maintenance covenant, it is very possible that that would constitute a violation of that original tentative plan approval, which it may have a built-in way of resolving itself if you think of it in those terms. So I can't say with 100% assurance that that would be the case should code enforcement proceedings move forward against Pacific Cascade Heights, but it's at least one possible outcome.
Commissioners, this is Adam Smith. May I offer a couple more thoughts on the issue?
Yes, Adam, thank you so much for joining in.
And so, one thing to keep in mind is there is not practically a maintenance standard, or, for example, a requirement that grading is occurred or occurs on an annual basis or anything to that regard with these local access roads. So Commissioner Henderson, your comment that they could, you know, if it was a temporary maintenance agreement that terminated in five years, that practically happens all the time because rural neighborhoods just don't, I mean, there is no standard requiring any level of maintenance. And so different neighborhoods have different levels of standards that those homeowners are wanting to abide by. And practically speaking, some neighborhoods can just do nothing for a constrained and long period of time. These are all relevant and necessary policy considerations as more of the rural Deschutes County has developed. As Kyle has noted, it's just a conversation that needs to occur in a different forum where all of the facts and all of the complexities can brought into light, and then perhaps we consider some legislative changes to our code. And I would say it's more complicated than even the parties are bringing up in this matter. It involves cost. I mean, to do this job right, to address this issue appropriately, really is looking at reimbursement agreements or different legal tools when you have a series of subdivisions that are all developing off of one, off of one access. Certainly, it's not ideal for the first subdivision to have the maintenance obligations when there are adjacent subdivisions crossing through that road. It's equally not fair for the last subdivision to have those maintenance obligations. But none of that nuance is currently addressed in the Deschutes County Code.
Thank you, Adam.
All right. To move forward, under the same comments, just to reiterate a lot of the discussion we just have, staff believes that any of those road maintenance, specific road maintenance duties for property owners in this area are best addressed as a private matter between all the parties that are involved at this point. And presumably, they could arrive at some amenable solution that meets everyone's needs. But the resolution of those concerns at this point, we do not believe requires county intervention. None of the users of the road are precluded from trying to address the situation privately. And in this instance, they're, they're trying to raise again these much broader issues as a part of what amounts to a relatively straightforward tentative plat proposal by the applicants.
Commissioners, this is Adam Smith again. I would know and encourage, I mean, that's one thing that the commissioners can certainly consider is adding some remarks in your decision, encouraging the parties in this matter to explore private resolutions. In the same way, subdivisions frequently just don't do much with those maintenance obligations. Lots and lots of rural neighborhoods come together with adjacent neighborhoods and address these matters privately. Oftentimes, it's just handshake agreements and people are exchanging money to all get the road graded. Sometimes it gets more formalized, but it's not unusual at all to say that these are private matters that should be addressed privately.
Thank you, Adam. Those are the final key issues. Just to reiterate some timeline concerns, the board should be aware that the 150-day period for the issuance of a final decision is December 31st, so just over three weeks in this particular case for the board to render their final decision. And at that point, I will take any final questions from the board that they might have concerning any of these matters.
I don't know any questions I'm ready to discuss, I guess. We might have questions as we discuss it.
Okay, no questions?
No questions.
Okay. All right, Kyle, I guess we're ready to discuss this.
So I guess acknowledging, so just two items here is basically it. And we just talked, you know, there was discussion about both of them as you were stepping through, but decision one, decision two, to get to the written decision of the board is what we're looking at today. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Well, since we've been talking about the road maintenance agreement, why don't we talk, do that one first? Because it's kind of the, it's a, should the plat, you know, should that be decided during this hearing?
So I would, I would say there's, you know, having the maintenance responsibility termination opportunity by Pacific Heights Homeowners Association was, you know, possibly forward-thinking, seeing that, oh, you know, this is a stub to the next neighborhood's coming. And I wasn't there, I'm just extrapolating that. So you can kind of see that this has been perceived for many years probably, that there's future development possibilities out there. Now the development days are here, you know, the map we have shows the curve on the corner and it looks like it's going to the next neighborhood, you know? So everybody's aware that there's step one, step two after the end of Pacific Heights Road at that, you know, delineation of the properties. I do agree and understand this is, the public right-of-way is there. You know, somebody has a lot, somebody else has a lot, and there's a road between them. So there's, on the land, on the map and dial, you can see there's a road there. The road could be maintained or not. You know, as I say, we have some rural roads that are just right-of-way, that's a dirt road, that's not maintained, nobody ever grades or puts rocks down, puts rock down. So I would conclude that this is a private matter that has a long runway, you know, people have seen it coming, and people are jockeying for position. You know, we could put some words in there acknowledging that, you know, the maintenance standards as agreed upon by the neighboring communities is a matter to be worked out. You know, I mean, there could be some real positive words in there, but I don't know that it's a decision that we would write up.
Interesting that you would say runway, because there is an old runway on this property. So, yes.
So just, that's my thoughts.
Okay.
Yeah, I certainly see the problem that the Elkins' property is concerned with, and I think the arguments they've made are good. I guess the question really gets back to the DCC 1716105. What does it mean when it says with maintenance responsibility assigned to, you know, either the county or to landowners? Does it have to be permanent? Can it be terminated? What, in other words, to be a plat, to be a new plat, you're supposed to have that done, but there's no, it doesn't say for how long or for that kind of go away or whatever. And I agree with your analysis that they, this was something that they thought about when they were negotiating this contract with, to buy it. That's why they put that covenant in there probably, was that, and the seller's fine with that because they're wanting to sell the property, the, there's nobody in the contract negotiations that's out on the rest of the road. So I am, I'm not really clear that the, about whether other legal means exist to solve it. I don't know that. I try to, I mean, I know what declaratory action is, but I don't know whether the, a judge will make a declaration about this or not as to what, who's responsible to maintain these roads, if anybody, I would hope they maintain them, these would be nice properties, et cetera, but it wouldn't.
Well, in a future road district voted on by the completed parcelized area, you know, would have X amount of property owners. If it was voted in, then there might be a tax rate, because that's what a road district is. But that's, is a safe.
You're saying these different subdivisions could combine to become a road district to maintain?
Yeah, just a footprint of a service area.
A larger road district.
Yeah, than a HOA, yeah. It wouldn't bother me though to put a condition on this approval that the applicant has to negotiate something with this, the neighboring property about maintenance, that they're buying it subject to a terminable maintenance agreement.
Well, so then, pardon me, it boils down to what maintenance level? I mean, because if it's a.
County road standards is what it says is the maintenance level, I think.
Sorry, though.
Isn't it?
What did you say?
I think it's required to be at county road standards.
Oh, and yeah, I don't know that it has to be that.
It says it's a public road with maintenance responsibility assigned to the homeowners association.
But, so then you mentioned a county standard, which is a paved road with a base and designed with and engineered. I don't know that we're talking about that. Can somebody help us with that? Are we talking about a required paved, maintained road? Or just a right-of-way with maintenance to the level agreed upon by the HOA?
Yeah, so give me, give me one second here, and I'll reiterate the specific language.
Well, on page 225, you can see the actual provision.
Yeah, so.
Constructed to county standards, doesn't say maintained to them.
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson's correct. It specifically points out that no proposed subdivision shall be approved unless it's accessed by roads constructed to county standards and by roads under one of the following conditions. And those conditions are the maintenance responsibilities. But county standards, there's no additional clarification in terms of what level those are, but presumably that's checked by the road department prior to their signing off of the final plat approval, which is the, where the actual maintenance covenant itself is recorded.
So I guess, yeah, for clarity, I guess I was envisioning that a county standard could be an unpaved road. Does this mean it's a paved road?
I think that in most instances, it is a paved road, but I would have to defer to the road department to know what the specific standards for this street in this case would be.
Commissioners, this is Adam Smith. I'm quickly looking up, and if I can't find the answer, I can contact the road department. But the standards are for local access roads. So to be clear, this is a local access road, it's not a county maintained road. And I am not sure that there are, other than right-of-way widths and the like, I'm not aware of different types of paving requirements for local access roads. I would be surprised if there were ones that are more important to the maintenance responsibilities, how often somebody needs to grade the road, put down new gravel, et cetera, et cetera. But if you bear with me, I'm trying to get those answers for you.
Yeah, thank you. As I say, I mean, I'm envisioning that we assume it's a beautiful blacktop paved road with stripes and whatever, but I don't think it's required to be in any, in any fashion.
I don't think so either.
So when you're talking about any right-of-way that could be either dirt, gravel, or paved, then it's a different story.
Yeah, I haven't been out this road, so I don't know what it is. I see what you're saying.
But, I mean, yeah, so there's an assumption that it's paved, but I don't know that there's a requirement that it's paved.
It just says on the covenant that they will improve, repair, and maintain the roads in good condition and repair and consistent with applicable Deschutes County road standards. That's in the covenant.
Yeah, so then.
Well, I guess the narrow question is whether we want to put a condition on the approval of this, that they've either accepted the responsibility or worked out some agreement with the homeowners association for that portion that it covers the Pacific Heights. Pacific Heights Road.
Yes. Fill checkholes, repair cracks, repairs, resurface road beds, repair and maintain drainage structures, remove debris, maintain signs, markers, striping, and any other work necessary or appropriate to improve, maintain, repair, and preserve the road for all weather purposes. So anyway, that's in their covenant. So they actually did give, the covenant has some details. But it seems like we are being told that this is not, this shouldn't be our issue today, and really, we just need to look at the key issues. So the hearing officer, do we, you know, leave it with EE the way it is? Or per the Smallwoods attorney saying that it should be modified to be just those three lots?
Well. Commissioners, sorry to interrupt, I just got off the phone with Cody Smith, if you guys would like some more clarity on the road standard piece.
Yes.
There are standards for the initial construction of local access roads, but there are no maintenance standards. are no maintenance standards. And so, of course, there are, when the local access road in the subdivision is first constructed, there's a minimum right-of-way width, surfacing requirement in the right, but then, but then there is no maintenance standard in how that is maintained going forward. And so to say subdivision X, for example, has a maintenance obligation without corresponding maintenance standard is a bit of a hollow requirement in the first place. And if I may, just to provide some more clarity, Commissioner Henderson, you asked.
Yes. In their road maintenance covenant, it is, does say clearly what they need to do for the, for the original HOA. They, they do have several obligations under, for their roads, which is a separate issue, I realize.
And so Commissioner Henderson, your questions earlier about what other legal mechanisms, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. First, Liz Fancher's clients, well, first to reiterate, the, the subdivision in question hasn't acted on the termination clause. Whether they can or they cannot is a separate matter, but they haven't acted on that termination clause. Nobody has taken any action. It would, arguably, would be against their own interest to do so. I'm sure different residents in that neighborhood would feel differently. But to date, nobody has acted on that termination clause. And so that really informs what legal mechanisms there are to resolve this dispute. Liz Fancher's clients can certainly submit an application, just like the application that's in front of you. And if they submitted an application on the day, on the day they submitted that application, if the agreement, or excuse me, the covenant wasn't terminated, then they would fall under the same code provisions as the current application in front of you, which the hearing officer decided met the, the county code. Separately, as Kyle mentioned in the staff report, Liz Fancher's clients can apply for likely a declaratory ruling as a better path to answer some of these separate methods or separate questions that they've raised. So Commissioner, to your question about a circuit court, I'm not sure we were contemplating a circuit court even as a mechanism to resolve this. I think there are two, at least two land use processes that Liz Fancher's clients can explore. First, to reiterate, they can just submit an application and deal with it as part of that application, and then second, they can apply for something on par with a declaratory ruling. So there's, we're not, nobody's precluding Liz client, or Liz Fancher's clients from getting the answers, to getting recourse or some clarity on this issue. Staff is just noting that this is perhaps not the best mechanism to do so, to, to hinge one land use application on another unrelated matter.
And if I may, just, just following up on Adam's remarks, Madam Chair, and members of the commission, so the subdivision code does require that the local access road, as it serves that subdivision, is designed to specific standards. I, I just offline quickly called Chris Doty, and Chris reminded me that once those, once that road is established, consistent with the subdivision code, concerning how that road is, how local access roads are ultimately maintained, there's no guidance in state statute. It's silent. And so that's part of the reason why this, this issue has, has arisen. And as Adam noted, following up onto Commissioner Henderson's questions, there's, you know, presumably there are mechanisms that are in place that can be utilized by, by homeowners within those.